We'll begin with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, counsel, you've had an opportunity to review the study session minutes of March 17th, along with the council meeting minutes of March 17th. Are there any comments or corrections? Being none, they stand approved. That brings us to communications petitions and awards, where tonight we have a proclamation recognizing the Van Dya Butler Veteran's Service Organizations. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Councilman Folick to issue the proclamations.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for allowing me to give the proclamations here. But if we could have the representatives from our veteran's service organizations that are here come up to the podium, please. I believe you're both from the American Legion posts, correct? Okay. So, for those of you that live in the community, as you know, we have had a Veterans Parkway Banner Program for the last three years, or we're starting the third year this spring. And all three veteran's service organizations in the community, the American Legion Post 668, AMVETS Post 99, and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 9582, have all financially supported the program since its inception. So, we have proclamations for all three, and I will read the proclamation here. Whereas the brave men and women who have served in the United States Armed Forces have made tremendous sacrifices to defend our freedoms, protect our homeland, and preserve the values we hold dear as a nation. And whereas honoring these heroes through visible, community-wide recognition is a meaningful way to express our deepest gratitude and ensure that their service is never forgotten. And whereas the Van Dya Butler Veterans Parkway Banner Program was established in 2023 to publicly recognize and honor our community's veterans by displaying commemorative banners along Veterans Parkway or Dixie Drive. And whereas for the past three years, this important initiative has been made possible through the generous financial contributions and unwavering support of our local veteran's service organizations, whose commitment to veterans extends beyond their service to include lasting community engagement and advocacy. And whereas these organizations have demonstrated exceptional leadership, patriotism, and dedication in helping to preserve the legacy of our veterans and foster a spirit of remembrance and respect among all residents. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the Van Dya City Council, on behalf of our grateful citizens, do hereby recognize and extend our heartfelt appreciation to the American Legion Post 668, AMVETS Post 99, and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 9582, who have provided continued financial support to the Veterans Banner Program over the past three years. Let this proclamation stand as a testament to their ongoing commitment to honoring those who have served and as an enduring symbol of our community's deep respect for all who wear the uniform. Thank you, gentlemen. Real quick, before I step back, I just want to give a couple other shout-outs for this program. As I started, as I stated before, we're starting the second cycle of banners, so our second two-year cycle. Besides the three veteran's service organizations, the program could not have occurred without the support of many other people. Nick Caviloscus from the Chamber of Commerce and his staff, who help administer the program, take all the orders, process all the payments, they've been a big partner with them. Butler Township obviously partners with us at the city, our friends at Speed Pro, they have supported the program in a tremendous fashion by turning banners out at very quick pace with short timelines, so they've done, and have done an outstanding job for us. Our public work staff at both the city and the township, who on very short timeframes put all the banners up every May, right before Memorial Day, and maintained them throughout the year for any banners that may need attention through the Veterans Holiday, or the Veterans' Day Holiday. And last but not least, Mr. Dave Arnold, and Dave needs to step up here, and I tricked him to coming here tonight, because he would not have come had he not, had I shared this with him. But this gentleman right here, Mr. Arnold, is a resident of the city. I went to him with an idea a little more than three years ago and kind of said, hey, do you have any ideas about this? So Dave has a background in marketing and graphic design, has his own business, and so I was just looking on maybe a couple concepts, and about a week later, I had a big mock-up board with some amazing displays, including obviously the ones that we settled on, and we have up and down Veterans Parkway. Dave has volunteered, and I do mean hundreds of hours, designing banners, researching photographs, improving photographs, I mean, we get some real humdingers with photographs of really poor quality, and Dave works magic to make those look good on banners. I'll never forget that we were, before the first set of banners, he required myself, and at the time Amber Holloway, the Assistant City Manager, to come out to do a site visit with him on Dixie Drive to get proportion sizes correct. And I kind of laughed about it at the time, but the importance of it, I think, speaks volumes. We get tons of compliments about our banners in the Van Dya Butler Township community. I'm kind of partial, I think our banners are the best. You look at a lot of other communities, and they're hard to read, there's too much information on them, and that's all because of Dave Arnold. He has, like I said, spent hundreds of hours dedicating his time to this program, and it would not have been successful without him. So, on behalf of City Council and the chamber, a little token of our appreciation for your hard work over the years, so thank you very much. And see you in two years.
All right, next we have a couple of introductions, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Althouse.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. It's always an exciting time. We welcome new employees to the city of Van Dya, and tonight we have two to introduce to council and our audience, the first being our newest police officer, Kaitlin Overman. So Kaitlin, if you'll stand. So she go by Katie, right? Okay. So Katie joined us, reported for duty this morning. She began her initial orientation in field training. She graduated from Sidney High School in 2023, then enrolled at Edison State Community College, working towards completion of an Associate of Applied Science degree in criminal justice. She completed her Edison State Criminal Justice Academy in June of 2023, with her Peace Officer Certification. She then worked as a part-time police officer with Jackson Center Police Department, starting in June of '23, and also served as a part-time officer with Botkins Police Department, starting in July of 2023. She transitioned to full-time status with Botkins, where she worked as a road patrol officer from March of 2024 through October of 2024. She is here with her family, the whole, took up the whole second row over here. Her husband Tyler, if you want to raise your hand, Tyler, works part-time at the Van Dya Fire Department, and they currently just recently moved into a house in Troy, Ohio. So we want to welcome them, want to congratulate Kaitlin, or Katie, on her appointment as a police officer, and will now administer her oath of office.
Aye, Kaitlin Overman.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects.
I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the city of Van Dya.
And the ordinances of the city of Van Dya.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
Within the division of police.
Within the division of police.
Congratulations. I believe you're going to pin her badge on. And if any of the family want to take pictures, come on up, you're welcome to come up here, we're going to take a couple pictures. This is a practice.
Oh, no it doesn't. I'm jumping the gun.
All right, we have a second employee to introduce tonight. We have Public Works Technician Matt Decker. Have you stand, Matt? So Matt is our newest Public Works Technician.
Sure, there'll be exciting chatter at the House, who's better, the police or the fire,
He joined our team on May 5th. Matt is a 2009 graduate of Van Dya Butler High School, and brings a wealth of hands-on experience to our team. He has worked at Van Dya Rental and Bracket Builders, and later ran his own business as
but we'll let you debate that.
a general contractor. Matt also brings specialized skills, including experience operating a boom truck. Outside of work, he stays busy, is a proud father of two children, a 16-year-old daughter and an eight-year-old son, and we are excited to have him on our Public Works Team. So welcome aboard, Matt, we are glad you're here.
No? All right.
I'm sorry, I have one other item to bring up.
Wasn't my mistake.
I'm in training. So, for those who may not be aware, today is Elected Officials' Day, and it's a time where we recognize those individuals who speak and act on behalf of the community. These are the leaders who sometimes face pressure, make tough choices, but they work their hardest to improve the lives through laws and local action. Many times, and this is the individual seated to my left here, often work long hours, juggle complex tasks, and without much praise. On to this day, we shift our focus, and we want to say thank you to all of you on council, and openly and sincerely let you know, this is our moment to pause and appreciate the dedication that you do behind the scenes and through your services at our various events and through council meetings. Oftentimes, we may forget the effort it takes to lead a, lead a city of Van Dya, and we realize decisions don't come easy, especially when every voice matters. Still, as elected officials, you carry out your responsibility with commitment, and so we are grateful for you, and we just want to offer you a small token of our appreciation. So Angie's going to hit that side, I'll hit this side, and say thank you, and recognize the service you provide on Elected Officials' Day.
Cheeseburgers?
He's got more water, doesn't he?
Well, thank you very much, and I would like to say that I appreciate all of the council members that serve with us, I really do. All right, finally, that concludes our communications petitions and awards, so if you would like to leave now, and now to send the rest of them, everybody gets up at once.
Would you open this for me?
Oh!
Thank you. Took a lot of work. Said a whiskey glass and chocolate, now how's that work?
interested citizens, so if someone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. We further ask that those that speak, please follow the etiquette in communicating with respect to others, and as a courtesy, please stay on topic with your statements while you address council. And a reminder, this is not a forum for arguments, and in an effort to keep, give all citizens an opportunity to express their thoughts and concerns, we ask that you keep your comments as brief as possible. So if you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium. Being none, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Again, we have some information items, I'll turn it over to Mr. Althouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have several items to cover tonight, make everyone aware of. First of all, this coming Thursday, May 22nd, will be the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Van Dya Art Park Amphitheater. The city is hosting this ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Van Dya Art Park Amphitheater in the summer kickoff event, once again, this Thursday night, May 22nd, it'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The event is free and open to the public. Secondly, the city offices will be closed on Monday, May 26th, in observance of Memorial Day. The recreation center will be open from 7:00 AM to noon, only for the fitness area track and gymnasium. And then as a reminder for summer schedule for council meetings, city councils established a summer schedule for meetings, which will be the one, one meeting a month on the third Monday of the month of June, July, and August. The next regular council meeting will be held on Monday, June 16th, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, and we have an action item.
Thank you once again. At tonight's meeting, council was asked to consider the appointment of Mary Zeller to the Van Dya Arts Council. There was a memo from Deputy Clerk of Council Swartz, Ms. Zellmer's application, and the Van Dya Arts Council roster that were included in the council packets.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Mary Zeller for appointment to the Van Dya Arts Council.
Second. I have a motion by Council Weaver, Councilwoman Avalotis Weaver, and a second by Councilman Folick, to approve Mary Zeller to the Van Dya Arts Council. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. We have no old business or resolutions this evening, but we do have a couple of ordinances in their first reading, the first one being ordinance 25-11. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $1,272,000, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide monies for the retirement of the city's outstanding taxable acquisition notes, Series 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Althouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. The land acquisition note issued for the acquisition of land for the Stone Quarry Crossing Development matures on July 22nd, 2025. The total amount due is $1,399,000 in principal plus interest. The 2025 budget includes a principal payment of $127,000, plus an interest payment amount of $95,000. The maturity date of the new note, $1,272,000, will be due in July of 2026. The debt is scheduled to be paid in full in 2036.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve ordinance 25-11 in its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Dugan, to approve ordinance 25-11 in its first reading. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have ordinance 25-12 in its first reading.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $865,000, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide monies for the retirement of the city's outstanding various-purpose notes, Series 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Althouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. The land acquisition note issued for the acquisition of land for the Stone Quarry Crossing Development matures on July 22nd, 2025. The total amount due is $1,399,000 in principal plus interest. The 2025 budget includes a principal payment of $127,000, plus an interest payment amount of $95,000. The maturity date of the new note, $1,272,000, will be due in July of 2026. The debt is scheduled to be paid in full in 2036.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve ordinance 25-11 in its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Dugan, to approve ordinance 25-11 in its first reading. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have ordinance 25-12 in its first reading.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $865,000, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide monies for the retirement of the city's outstanding various-purpose notes, Series 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Althouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Fire Engine 2016 Bond Anticipation Note issued for Fire Engine matures on August 19th, 2025. This note was combined with the Fire Ladder Truck 2021 ban in order to save on cost of issuance. The current remaining amount due on the note is $1,053,000, which consists of the Fire Engine for $96,000, and the Fire Ladder Truck for $957,000 plus interest. The amount of the principal payment for the Fire Engine is $48,000, and $140,000 for the Fire Ladder Truck. The 2025 budget includes a pay-down amount of $48,000 on the outstanding principal due for the Fire Engine, and $140,000 for the Fire Ladder Truck, plus an interest payment of $63,440. The maturity of the new note, Fire Engine of $48,000, the Fire Ladder Truck of $817,000, will be in August of 2026. The debt on the Fire Engine is scheduled to be paid in full in 2026, and in year 2031 for the Fire Ladder Truck.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I make motion to accept ordinance number 25-12 as written. Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dugan, and a second by Councilwoman Fars, to approve ordinance 25-12 in its first reading. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, excuse me, Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have ordinance 25-09 in its second reading.
An ordinance naming the Van Dya Art Park Amphitheater in honor of Bill Jurgens.
Thank you. Mr. Althouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. At the April 7th study session, Mayor Herbs appointed an ad hoc committee, the Van Dya Arts Council, to review the suggested renaming of the new amphitheater in the art park in honor of Bill Jurgens, founder of RB Jurgens Contractors. On April 10th, the ad hoc committee met for this purpose. Included in your packets is the ad hoc committee, Van Dya Arts Council, meeting minutes of April 10th, 2025, with their recommendation to council, and a request letter from the Van Dya Rotary Club. At the May 5th council meeting, formal action will be taken in the form of an ordinance with the first reading and second reading and final adoption at tonight's council meeting.
All right, and since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 25-09 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakeslee, and a second by Councilwoman Fars, to approve ordinance 25-09 in its second reading. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have ordinance 25-10 in its second reading.
An ordinance expressing the city's intent to negotiate jointly with other cities in the region on a one-price schedule under which electric light services shall be furnished to the residents of the city for the purpose of street lighting.
Thank you. Mr. Althouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city's streetlight contract with Miami Valley Lighting and DPL Energy Resources, also known as AES Ohio, expires on December 31, 2025. The current contract is a 10-year contract that took effect January 1, 2016. MVCC in the past has taken the lead in negotiating the streetlight contract for its member cities and affiliate members. The estimated cost of professional services associated with this set of negotiations is $60,000. MVCC will cover one-third of those costs, and any additional fees in the participating jurisdictions will pay remaining costs based upon population. The city of Van Dya estimated participation cost is $1,195. It is recommended that a regional coalition be established and negotiate the upcoming streetlight contract. This regional coalition would allow for a uniform approach to the upcoming contract negotiations, provide leverage in negotiating reasonable rates and provisions for the streetlight services, and ensure consistent contract provisions for cities across the region. I recommend the city participate in the regional coalition to negotiate the upcoming streetlight contract. This approach will provide the resources and regional representation needed to negotiate a reasonable and competitive contract.
All right, thank you. Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, we'll again open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to make a comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and any comment you would have. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve ordinance 25-10 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick, and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee, to approve ordinance 25-10 in its second reading. Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. We have no emergency ordinances, and that brings us to reports from boards and commissions, where we have a variance request at 221 North American for an accessory structure. The total area, Mr. Althouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Tori Elrich, has requested variance to permit the construction of a shed that will cause the total area of all accessory structures to exceed 40% of the principal building footprint, 512 square feet, at 221 North American Boulevard. The proposed shed would be 640 square feet, with an existing 160-square-foot shed for a total of 800 square feet. On April 23rd, 2025, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval, with one condition being, the applicant must obtain a building permit and comply with all standards and requirements associated with that permit as directed by the chief building official.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve the variance 25-005 at 221 North American Boulevard with the, with the condition.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Avalotis Weaver, to approve the variance at 221 North American, along with the one condition noted. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have the civil service meeting minutes of April 9th, along with the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting minutes of April 23rd, the planning commission meeting minutes of March 25th. Are there any questions or comments regarding those? All right, and we'll move on to the April 2025 bill listing, in the amount of $2,414,642.30, along with the monthly expenses over $25,000, and the monthly purchase card detail in the amount of $30,290.20. And that brings us to council comments, where we will begin with Mr. McDonald.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Althouse?
Thank you. Just two things. Number one, I want to say it was, it was an honor to turn, to attend the memorial program at the school on Friday. They did a fantastic job, as they've done for many, many years, honoring the service of our military personnel in our community, and especially remembering those Van Dya Butler graduates who ultimately paid the sacrifice and gave their lives in protecting and serving their communities, and, and giving us the freedom they have. And I would say, in my travels up and down North Dixie Drive, the banners do look fabulous. I think it does a very, very great job honoring those who have served, and so I just want to say kudo. And so, I just want to say kudos to Councilmember Follak and everyone else who participated in that. I think it's been a great job to really beautify our community. And also, just wanted to say thank you once again for being able to attend the Dayton Development Coalition fly-in last week. There was a lot of great conversations, great presentations, and networking opportunities. So I appreciate that opportunity from council. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Follak?
Yes, thank you. Couple of things real quick. First, I wanted to extend condolences to the families of two longtime city employees, both Carl Curry, who retired as a police sergeant, and Mike Kimbrel, who many in the community would know as Officer Mike that was involved with the Passport to Safety Program with firefighter Mike for a number of years. But both gentlemen passed away in the past few weeks. So condolences to their families. A, I think I got this correctly, but just wanted to recognize both Ron Atkins and Kevin Keely, who are both stepping down from the Planning Commission after serving. And I wanted to give a special shout-out to Mr. Atkins. He's been on the Planning Commission since, I think, 2014 and has served as the chair for at least the last seven years. So both of those gentlemen's service on the Planning Commission will be missed, so thank them for their service. And lastly, just because I realized that this is the last meeting before it's official, but just to recognize Steve Clark. Steve is retiring after 37 years with the city of service. The last 20 as our Parks and Recreation Director. But Steve has had a tremendous amount of influence on the success of our Parks and Recreation Department. I can attest that when he came here in 1988, shortly thereafter, I met Steve when I was keeping score for basketball programs with Roger Pratt and Bruce Modder at the pit. That was my first job with Parks and Recreation when I was 13. Labor laws be damned. Paid under the table, I believe, but I think the statute of limitations is over on that. But Steve was an early mentor. You know, my first career was in Parks and Recreation. I kind of started my public service career in Parks and Recreation, and Steve was a mentor to me and has been a good friend over the years. And I think his leadership in the department will be missed. So I know his last day is exactly 37 days to the day he started here on June 13th. So he has attended his last council meeting. I texted him earlier and said, "How are you not here tonight?" And he's like, "I'm done." So congratulations to Steve on a well-deserved retirement, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Fairst?
Well, I just wanted to let everybody know that not only are we dedicating the amphitheater at the art park to Mr. Jurgens, the Michelle Robinson Band plays that night from 6:00 to 8:00. So come out and enjoy the first music third Thursday at the art park this year and join your friends and family out there for a nice evening. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Avalotus Weaver?
First, congratulations to the new employees that we have, and we got to meet tonight. Thank you also for the opportunity to attend the fly-in with Mayor Herbst and our city manager. I got to learn a lot and meet a lot of people. It was a great, great event. We have a lot coming up in the city. The Vandalia Market will be hosted at the rec center this week, the art park ribbon-cutting. And then on Monday is the Memorial Day Ceremony at 11 o'clock at the Vandalia Rec Center. That's always a very, very nice event that they said is open to the public. I also got to attend the memorial program at the school with Mayor Herbst and our city manager, Kurt. And then on Friday, I am looking forward to getting to attend a new training that is free in Columbus on economic development and policy. So I'm getting excited about what I'll learn about there, and I just hope that everybody has a nice, safe week.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dugan?
I too want to welcome Katie and Matt to our family, and congratulations to Steve Clark on his retirement. That's well-deserved. I will miss you all for a couple of months. I hope to be back for the August meeting if I'm recuperated enough, so I'll miss you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lewis?
I didn't realize that Steve was ducking out of here before our last meeting, but I thank Cory for bringing that up, and he was a, has been a great servant of the city, and I think he's a good man. I would also like to comment that I think Bill Jurgens, he provided a lot of support for the art park, and he was a good man, too, and a real philanthropic guy throughout the community in a number of different endeavors. And I think it's very, very appropriate that the park be named in his honor. And lastly, I would like to thank Councilman Follak because I know that through his initiative and Mr. Kavaloskis and Mr. Arnold, those signs are really, really great in Vandalia. And I think I never really got this sense of community that Councilman Fairst has been talking about for decades. But I really think that those things speak to that, and I really like them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Well, I echo everything that's been said, and kudos to Councilman Follak as well for having initiated this project. It's well-deserved for all of our veterans and a nice way to honor them. Also, and thank you then for the recognition for the elected officials. Didn't see that coming. Not on Facebook, so I thought it was posted, but anyway. Appreciate that, and gift will go to good use. Other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
All right, well, it sounds like I've got about the same thing that everyone else has. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Clark for all the years of service he's provided to Vandalia. He's been quite a fixture here. And also, at the same time, when one is retiring, we introduced two new members to the staff. So again, congratulations to them. As mentioned by several, the memorial program was a tremendous event at the high school here this past Friday. I'd also like to wish Ms. Barbara Spurgeon a very happy birthday. And she chose to spend her birthday with us. So happy birthday. All right. And good to know that Rich Hopkins has enough blooper material from tonight's meeting, so when Youth in Government rolls around, he'll have plenty to work with. So with that...
No, no, no.
No, no, no. Here, yep, there we go. Another blooper.
I will mention, we do plan to coax Steve Clark back here on June 19th meeting so we can recognize him for his years of service. He's done a tremendous job, so...
All right, bear with me while I dig the study session out of the trash, because that's where the sessions are. It's been recommended that council enter into an executive session to discuss with the city attorney pending or imminent court action. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver? Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. There it is, it's not in red.
I really knew nothing about this.
About what?
This holiday.
I didn't either.
Dave and me.
Yeah.